Independent Chair of the Inquiry into the Sheffield Street Tree dispute. Thanks for joining us. Could you tell us your name, please, and your role?
Yep, my name is Alison Teal. I'm working as a psychologist and therapist. Previously from two thousand and sixteen to twenty twenty two May this year, I was a Green Party councillor on Sheffield City Council, representing Netherwick and Shetland.
Fantastic, thanks so much. And thanks for coming and having this discussion with us today. So I'm going to run through a few introductory points. Please don't take anything about the fact that I'm mentioning you at least points to you because I'm running through them with everybody. I do very much appreciate your coming to talk to us. The discussion is being recorded and broadcast and it will be available for people to watch afterwards. I just want to make sure you're aware of that and happy with that.
Yes.
Very good. And obviously, the dispute was a time of significant stress and emotional upset for lots of people. And there's a degree of emotive content to it. We here, though, have to be careful that we don't allow anything to be broadcast which might be defamatory or offensive or libelous. If I get concerned at any point that we may be getting close to that territory, I will tell you and ask you if you could adjust what you're saying. And in extreme situations, I might have to pause the hearing, just so you're aware of all that. What we want is to have a constructive and open discussion. It's a chance to hear from New York perspective, it's a very important perspective. And it's part of the overall terms of reference I've set for my inquiry to help the city recover from what happened and minimize the risk of problems reemerging in future. So if you're okay with all that, maybe I'll just start by asking if there's anything you'd like to say by way of introductory remarks before we get through a list of topics I sent you in advance that I'd like to discuss with you. Anything introductory?
Yeah, so just for context, I guess participating in the tree campaign brought me into politics in terms of representation. And that was driven by the shock of seeing how policy can be so extraordinarily detrimental to the real world. And of course, I knew all these things in theory, but witnessing it on the streets and having that, as you say, emotional visceral experience was really quite profound. It really changed me and I know it's changed a lot of people. And so we've had this sort of rude awakening to the realities of capitalism, if you like, and how even a left-wing, supposedly left-wing Labour council can be so caught up with that that decisions are made fundamentally always concerning money. And all other concerns are extraneous, they don't count. And so, and also the experience of the way power works and the police and how the police were there. I naively thought, as did many of my fellow campaigners, that police were there to protect us and look after us. But it turned out that they were there to protect the interests of a multinational company. And so this was, again, a rude awakening, something I might have read about, but became very real to me. And so that's sort of the context of how this politicised law and a lot of residents, particularly in Netherwick and Shetland, that I got to know really well as a result of this, yes, the tree fiasco.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much indeed. So let me start by asking you, how your concerns over the removal of street trees first arose?
Yeah, so a friend just let me know that, hey, did you know that the council are going to be felling trees on Wayland Road, which is very close to where we live, like a minute walk, a couple of minutes' walk at the most. So we went over there to speak to people in the streets and there were an arborist crew there from Amy. And, you know, we had a bit of a chat and that, you know, what's the problem? Because there weren't any particularly large trees. And, you know, it's hard to understand why they produce beautiful blossoms in the spring and, you know, made the street so much more attractive than it was. I was actually quite envious of the street because I lived on Westbrook Bank, which doesn't have any trees at all. And that made me really sad. And so I enjoyed, you know, I'd take a route, you know, and walking around to go where the trees are to enjoy that because it's just so much more lovely. And so, yeah, we talked to them and then I think it was councillor Fox was the leader of the street scene and the environment or whatever it was called back then. Actually had a chat with him as well and he was kind of like really affable and seemed to be that he wasn't entirely clear, really. And said he'd look into it, I think he said. Yeah, and so that was the beginning. So we actually did block the load, human chain, at one point in that situation. And those trees are all still there.
Okay, and was that in two thousand and fifteen?
June, late June, twenty fifteen.
Okay, very good. And did you have any other engagement with the council in the light of that, if you like, other than?
Yeah, so then I, so then a group started to form and then we learned about groups elsewhere. But, yeah, so Save Netherwick Trees came into existence. And so I spent a lot of time on the streets and in town places gathering signatures for petition. I can't remember exactly when that was presented, but we did have more than five thousand signatures. So it triggered a debate. It was pretty clear from that debate that the majority party, Labour, weren't particularly swayed by any of the arguments put forward. And so, yeah, I think we knew then that we were in for quite a fight. But not everyone could have imagined how far, how long it would last and how far it would go. But, yeah, so I became very much involved then.
Okay. And then in two thousand and sixteen, you stood for election. Why did you stand for election? What was the platform you stood on?
So I actually was approached by the Chair of Sheffield Green Party, who was aware that I, one of my, I've got two main political passions. One is women's liberation and the other one is about the environment. And so she said, do you realise no women are standing? What are you going to do about it? So, 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 okay, I guess I would put mine forward. I didn't feel that I'd be ready for it. But I guess, I'd be honest, I can't really remember entirely what my thinking was at the time. But I was certainly, I'm sure it crossed my mind that maybe I'll be able to do something about the tree campaign, maybe I'll be able to do something to help protect trees if I become part of the council. And certainly that would have been my campaign, literature and what have you, and door locking and so forth. I would have been speaking to people about the tree campaign because I would have recognised lots of people because more than enough people were getting involved. And so I just scraped in, oh, yeah, I just, I just got in by eight votes. But I was elected in May two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah. And what was, what was your impression of the views of people in your ward?
Constellation of astonishment. You know, it was very difficult to make sense of, yeah, we had these gorgeous, gorgeous tree-like streets, which I'm sure you must have visited. It's just a very, very lovely area and that's why people are attracted to it. It's mostly the trees. And it's just so pleasant to be there. So even if you can't afford to live in one of the lovely houses and most of them are more expensive now than they would have been a while ago. You know, it's just a real pleasure. So as I say, like when I'm thinking about where I'm getting from A to B, I'll do my best to make sure that, you know, my booth includes one that's like the trees and a lot of people there feel the same as I do. Like it's just a, it's an appreciation, it's a chance to kind of, yeah, enjoy nature, even though you're in the city. Yeah, but that's how they felt. They were really, really shocked, like, why would anyone want to ruin this, this beautiful spot?
Yeah.
To make this, to make this.
Yeah, okay, I understand. So do you have a sort of assessment or impression on the views of the interest groups concerned about what was happening in the years after two thousand and sixteen in particular? We'll come to the period after, from two thousand and sixteen in a bit. But in the early years, what was your, is there anything else you'd like to say beyond what you've said about the views of interest groups and the concerns of interest groups?
Well, just that I'm aware that it had been ongoing for quite a while. So I didn't actually land in Sheffield, I landed into Westbrook Bank in February two thousand and fourteen. So things had already happened before, that was blissfully unreal. But I know that Gillian Creasy and Rob Murphy, they are both Green councillors who were really superb in challenging the contract in the first instance and also questioning what the proposal was and the whole premise of the PFI and the terrible expense that would accrue into the future. So I'm aware that that went on, I'm aware that there was a public meeting involving Professor Ian Rotherham and that the Green Party certainly and many other people probably like Hands of the Earth and those sorts of groups, Sheffield Greenies, would have been aware and concerned. But nothing had been, there was no mobilisation of the political opposition at that, before that time.
Okay. You may have alluded to this, but what's your understanding of why the council was acting as it was up to two thousand and sixteen, notwithstanding the value local people in your area attached to the trees?
What was my understanding of why the council?
Of why the council were acting in that way?
Okay, well, I guess they were locked into a contract that they had signed up to, which you'll recall we didn't have access to. And even as an opposition councillor, I mean, the big shock when I had my initial induction as a councillor, I remember the, you know, the leading governance director saying, you will have the same access to information as any member of the general public. Which was like, really quite shocking for me, I had no idea. That information would not be accessible to me, that I wouldn't have over and above access to things like the contract if I had reason to want to, to need any aspects of it. So we're very much in the dark about what this contract said. And so, speaking for myself, I supposed that they must, they must be really contractually bound, which had left them unprepared, shockingly, that people might actually be unhappy about what they'd signed up to. And, you know, I believe that there were meetings before I was involved where people did express concerns already about the tree felling that had started in two thousand and twelve. And that little sympathy or understanding had been shown for that point of view. So again, it seems to be that, I think because it's called a highways contract, the focus was very much on the highway. And anything that interfered with the highway was seen as expendable, was seen as secondary or just negligible. And so my understanding is that they, they were just thinking highway, they weren't thinking about the context of the highway, which is the natural world. They weren't thinking about how the natural world is affected by the highway and vice versa. They just didn't seem to have that sort of systemic way of thinking that, you know, people who are all nature, environmental, green-minded would naturally consider. So again, it's pretty incomprehensible that, that they didn't seem to have fact of nature or those elements at all. And hence they ended up in this awful situation, which, and again, you know, the political realities, like the PFI contract, my understanding is that they're constructed by legal people who are very highly skilled and then come up against councillors that may not have a legal background at all and there's some help, you know, that there'll be officers there to support. But still, my understanding is that they're very, they're in a far less, a much weaker position because they don't have that knowledge. So whether or not Amy's lawyers were aware that they might all might have guessed that they were going to run into problems, because I think there was something in the contract, there was some anticipation that there could be protests about the trees and they recall something like that. So it's not like they weren't warned, but mainly it didn't come up in the actual conversation. So they signed off on a contract which made it extremely difficult for them to make changes. I mean, subsequently, we found out that they could, because they did. But at the time, that was the sense that I think a number was made that the council had locked themselves into something that they needed to alter.
Yes, okay. So you were elected and I'm interested in how you then engaged as a councillor with officers and with other members during the course of two thousand and sixteen. And also, if you could say a bit to us about how in that period you were also involved in supporting action on the streets, as it were?
Yes, so I probably spent a lot more time in the streets than I did in the council. And, you know, part of that was, because then it became part of my role, really. So what I've been doing as an environmental activist tree campaigner, I was now also doing on behalf and with residents as well. But so it didn't, but it didn't really change in the middle. I was just a member of, of the group and we became, you know, more and more active, not just in Netherwick and Shetland, but other parts of the city as well. And so I did whatever I could between, you know, round meetings to be on the streets and be present and have like the WhatsApp group alerts and so forth. So I'd attend as much as I possibly could. And then in terms of the actual council, as I said, I was actually very limited in terms of information that I could access. But so I would use the facility I had as a councillor to submit written questions to the council meeting every month. So then they were obliged to give a written answer. And I had the opportunity to ask supplementary questions to those written answers where necessary, the councillor had gotten a very good answer. But, you know, I just felt I was constantly fogged off. The other thing that becoming a councillor did was that it gave me a more interesting profile to the media, so I was able to have opportunities to say, write articles or do interviews, that sort of thing. If they came to protest on the street, the media, then they would work out that I was a councillor. Oftentimes, they'd want to speak to me, so that gave me the opportunity to have a voice. So that was a benefit, I hope, to the campaign, that I would be then in that role then and not. In addition to being the tree campaigner, I was also a councillor, which seems totally helpful.
Yes, okay, thank you. There were some controversial events in Ruskin's Road in November two thousand and sixteen, as you know. What's your perspective or your view on that?
Do you know, it's funny, yeah, like I just, I still can't, it's hard to believe it actually happened, you know? Even though it's happened, you know, a while ago. Just when I reflect on incidents like that, it's just astonishing. And the way that they managed to get the police involved to enable that to happen. I'm sure you might have seen or spoken to people like Jenny and Fried, the two women who were arrested on that day. And, you know, just the whole, like the dissonance of it, they've been knocking on the door, making the assumption that something terrible might have happened to a family member and, you know, getting out into the, could have been asked to move your car. It's just so extreme. And so you have to wonder, it seemed to be, I think it was an act of spite and therefore quite a misuse of power, I believe. It seemed to be about, like, creating this sort of shock and awe situation that would intimidate residents to such a point where they wouldn't try this on again. Of course, it had, that backfired horribly because it just raised the profile of the campaign so much more. And more and more people started to get involved. So the more they upped the ante, the more people were resisting. And they don't seem to have observed that because they continued on this path of bullying. It was kind of bullying behaviour. And that was absolutely astonishing. I didn't, I had an appointment, I wasn't able to get there as early as I wanted, but I think I got there around ten o'clock and most of the fending had been done except for Ellen, who still survives, which is fantastic. Yeah, I helped to protect that tree when there was some disagreement about the, because it had been felled on the street side, that it was now unbalanced. And they were trying to persuade the homeowner that their insurance wouldn't believe if they did felled the whole tree. No, that's sorts of tactics that they got involved in. And anyway, the tree's still standing and I think it's in good health. And I'm sure the residents are really pleased too. But, yeah, what an utterly devastating and cruel behaviour to engage in against the residents of the city you're there to, to represent and to look after. You know, I'm just, I'm never stopping shocked about that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. You were arrested in February two thousand and seventeen and I wanted to ask you what you can tell us about the charges you faced, any comments you want to make on why and when they were dropped and any other follow-up that happened after that that you want to mention to the inquiry?
Yeah, I think, like, I know there's lots of people with encyclopedic knowledge about dates and situations and stuff and so, I'm not going to compete with them. But I can talk about the emotional impacts and the effects it had on people. So, yeah, so, so we, yeah, I've told this story many times before, but, yeah, Paul Brook, as you know, went and sat in front of the tree and spontaneously, a group of us, it was kind of like one of those experiences, it was very unconscious sort of thing. I just felt absolutely drawn to it, it's like, that's not right, he shouldn't be on his own. And miraculously, you know, six other people felt the same way at the same time or five other people felt the same way. And then suddenly I became aware that other people were also there and were also doing that. And it's sort of like a really strange phenomenon. And then it's kind of like, there was a real sense of camaraderie. There was no way that, it was very hard for Martin because Martin was there too. And he'd known his wife and they had a conversation because they had the children to pick up and stuff later. It's like, I'm not sure how long, if I get arrested, how long will I be detained for? Will I be able to still pick up the kids? I'm not sure. So he had to leave and I was really painful to him. I was really disappointed that he couldn't stay with us. And so, you know, sort of this sort of action creates like a real bond, which is quite remarkable. And so I think there's a real sense of solidarity about protecting this tree. And then, of course, they gave us months, like, I think a couple of hours, that they were trying to persuade us not, not to have to be arrested because, you know, there's quite a lot of work involved in arresting people, isn't there, for the police and what have you? But anyways, a strangely convivial atmosphere going to Shepparton Lane. And we were pretty needy, but when we actually got into the cells, that was extraordinary. I'd had this idea that we would all be together, but of course, we were all separated. And it was a very thick door, it was like being put in a bank vault. It's extraordinary, like, it's like, all we were doing was sitting under a tree and now we find ourselves isolated in a cell, extraordinary sound. So it was just like so unblown, so unnecessary. Anyway, there we were. So I was in there for eight hours and forty-one minutes, which again is like extraordinary. And it's very cold and rather lonely and boring and, you know. But so that, so that was a very interesting experience. Well, I was arrested for, it was under trade union legislation about interfering with the workman's tools or something. And, yeah, I wasn't surprised that it was dropped because other cases had already been dropped. So I never expected to end up being caught. I think, again, I think it was an act of intimidation, it was meant to put people off. And again, it had the opposite effect, I think it encouraged more people to do that. And therefore then they, I think they realised they stopped arresting people pretty soon after because it's like, we're going to have to look at something else. Unfortunately, something even worse came along. But, yeah, I wasn't surprised that it was dropped. And of course, yeah, campaigners did then sue for wrongful arrest. And that cost South Yorkshire Police money it couldn't afford. So, yeah, just what a travesty.
So the campaigners sued for wrongful arrest, is there anything you want to tell us about that and the follow-up to that?
No, particularly.
Okay, fine. I want to ask you now about meetings you attended in the council in April two thousand and seventeen and when there were concerns expressed essentially about your behaviour and how you were acting by the council's monitoring officer and what you thought about that and how you responded to that.
So you're referring to me being asked to leave the chamber?
And the subsequent interaction you had with the council's monitoring officer, till you end up with?
Okay, so, yes, I wanted to point out that cabinet member had been misleading and I was asked to be attracted, I'm attracted deliberately misleading, but couldn't be attracted misleading because I feel well that they've been misleading all along. So, I mean, it was on the subject of flexi pay and I think that it was the previous cabinet member, councillor Terry Fox, had said that flexi pay had been used a hundred and forty times or something already. We couldn't find any evidence that it had been used at all. So, you know, I was being generous, calling it misleading. But, so anyway, so then, yeah, that was all a bit of shenanigans of going out of the chamber and what have you. Really, really did appreciate the support of opposition councillors, like everyone walked out. And I thought that was really, really impactful in terms of like sort of the sense of enough is enough, like you've got to stop behaving this way, you've got to start respecting us enough to actually give us the truth, to actually give proper answers. It would have been nice if that had happened, but it was great that we had that, you know, solidarity and statement, but, you know, we really shouldn't have to put up with this. So that was really good. I've got the next bit of the question.
It's about the subsequent interaction you had with the monitoring officer?
Okay, so, yes, so I was under investigation for that and also I was already under investigation, I think, because of some Facebook posts and things. They were having difficulty differentiating whether or not the time that I did my tree campaign, whether I was acting as a councillor or was a member of the public. Because if you're a Labour councillor, you get to be a separate private citizen when you tweet things that are inappropriate. But if you're an opposition councillor, you don't get that luxury. You're always coming into the council, you're always like, so it's one rule for them and another rule for us, it was very clear. This terrible hypocrisy in the way that they treat people. So again, this whole investigation thing was a way of creating stress-forming, awaiting intimidation, it's bullying. And so it's unfortunate to see, I have to be careful here, but yes, that our bidding the officers were complicit with that bullying. Whether they were just following orders or not is not even there for me, very devious and it was very unpleasant. Douglas Johnson was fantastic during that time, he was really, really helpful, really supportive, as was Rob and Edgerton as well, it was really good to have their support. But, yes, it, it was very wary and, yeah. I don't know that if this process is going to do anything to address those sorts of effects, the bullying, the emotional trauma of a lot of this stuff, whether or not you'll succeed in being able to highlight that in a way that's related to some sort of recognition. I mean, the council repeatedly said that they'd apologised, but still doesn't feel like that they're really sorry, doesn't feel like they really understood the, yeah, the emotion.
Yes, 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 okay, thank you very much. The, you were then subject with other people to an injunction taken out in late in two thousand and seventeen and I wanted to ask you about that. I also wanted to ask if you formed any view about why Amy were not part of the injunction? The injunction was taken out by the council, just the council.
Yes, so, yeah, it's strange, isn't it? Because to take out an injunction against your own residents is not a good look politically. And so, actually, I still don't understand why the council took out the injunction rather than Amy because I get that it would have been a good look for them either. But other, like say the anti-fracking situations, why, you know, Quadra took out... I get that it would have been a good look for them either, but other, like say the anti-fracking situations, why, you know, Podrilla took out an injunction against the UK Press New Road. So I don't know why, yeah, I don't know why Amy didn't, I don't think we've got any answers to that yet, but someone might be able to enlighten you. So I find that quite extraordinary and also I think we found out subsequently that the costs, the costs for Amy, not the council, but the council made a lot of, well, I think they made statements about how the cost of the campaign was behaved by the public first. So again, that was misleading or something's gone on there. So, again, so I've forgotten my phone, what was the first?
No, you've answered my question. So the, there was a court hearing basically on the injunction.
Yes.
Do you want to say anything about the hearing and the outcome of that hearing?
The first, the injunction.
The injunction, yes, well, come on to what happened afterwards in a minute, don't we?
Yeah, so I think that there was some, just for me personally, it's some political persecution going on there, I mean, I can't be sure. There were a lot of very active people, I was just one of them, so it's a bit random, the selection that they made, the actual people they made in the injunction, but I feel that I was there for political reasons, which again is a misuse, abuse of power, I believe. It was, yeah, very unfortunate for us that, you know, justice males had a background in corporate law and so it felt like we probably wouldn't be necessarily successful, that it seemed things our way and also we're not, have to be careful, but yeah, I'm not convinced that we had the best legal representation we might have had, but we're all very naive and haven't been involved in anything like this before. So yeah, unfortunately the injunction was granted, that was really devastating because we thought that that would put an end to our protests, but yeah, necessity is the mother of invention, we came up with a whole bunch of stuff to enable us to continue. And yeah, I'm maybe satisfied that that was the case. So, yeah.
Okay, so the injunction was taken out and it imposed restrictions on what you were permitted to do essentially. And I, I wanted to ask you how, if at all, what you subsequently did in respect of action on the streets changed. I mean, in particular, whether you intended to comply with the terms of the injunction and whether you made your intentions to comply clear.
I don't, I can't, I'm not sure if I've said anything publicly about that, but yes, of course I intended to comply with the terms of the injunction because the consequences were terrible. And so, but what we did seek to do and did succeed in doing is finding ways to still be effective regardless of the injunction. And so the whole gecko in the business, the whole business of, you know, that's why it became so important to get to, to identify where they were going to try and fail. To get there beforehand, so that we could put our bodies in the way before barriers went up. Hence, you know, the number of times that I and many other people have been squished by barriers and, you know, that physical intimidation. You know, it's really extraordinary what was going on, that was the arists in the first, and since then later it became security, the guys that moved forward. That happened a lot, you know, so it was a real, real literal fight, you know, between like who's going to get there first. I've got memories of running from one street to another to try and get there, it's like, they're setting up somewhere else and then you'd be running to get to the other place to try and, you know, where you haven't managed to stop a barrier putting up, there's a chance you can stop a barrier somewhere else.
Yeah, okay, but I just want to make sure I've understood clearly what you've said, so you intended to comply with the injunction.
Absolutely.
You didn't want to breach the injunction, but what you were trying to do was to find, I think I heard you say, creative ways of sustaining the campaign which didn't breach the injunction. Is that a fair summary?
Creative ways of protecting trees.
Of creating, yes, okay, good, thank you, that's helpful, just to have that clear. What then happened was that committal action was brought against you and others for alleged breach of the injunction. So I wanted to ask you your sort of reaction to that, your experience of going to court for the committal proceedings and what you thought might happen at the committal proceedings.
Gosh, it was just, again, it's one of those things, it's like, did that really happen? Because it's really quite extraordinary, but again, this horrible, you know, I miss, I miss, you know, my former ignorance about, you know, what people are capable of doing, so, you know, I had so my case, you know, people who worked for Amy wrote things about me, the day it was, it was very minor actually, but that it was there. It was, they had felt it was enough to implicate me that I allegedly wrote the injunction about times I was there and stuff, but, you know, I knew, I knew what the injunction said. So there are two examples, so one, I was on some cobblestones outside of the Kenwood Hotel and I understood that I was on their property, not on the highway. And that allegation was dismissed right away, I think, or the arrister had to stand up and say, actually, we haven't been able to prove that she was on the highway, so we forget that one. And then the other one was a massive barrier that they'd created, but they'd used a private wall. And so all the time that I was in that barrier, I just kept checking that they hadn't put barriers in front of the wall, because if they had, then I would have been breaching the injunction. But I knew that as long as those barriers weren't there, I was safe, because it says a complete, there has to be a complete barrier. So as far as I was concerned, I wasn't breaching the injunction, so there I was, I was accused of breaching the injunction on two counts. And the evidence was so weak and I knew that I hadn't actually breached the injunction, so I completely didn't understand how government was managing to get to court. So again, I think it was politically motivated, which is outrageous, you know, absolutely outrageous. And on such legacy grounds that then they would actually, you know, like ask for committal, like to send me to prison, like it's just, I'm brilliant because I have this, it's such inprodutivity about the whole situation, it's just like. So I never, so as awful and as upsetting and shocking as it was, I could never take this quite seriously. You know, I knew that there was, that there must be some risk that I could be sent to prison, but it was just so hard to believe. And then of course, yeah, the judge actually dismissed the allegations against me right away, so I never even had to take the stand or anything. And which was, was right and proper and grateful that, but justice never saw things that way. Then the horror was that the council's spin, you know, communications team said that I'd been met up on a technicality, which is again, is like just extraordinary way to phrase it, the fact that the allegations were dismissed, you know, that's not a technicality. The fact that I was telling the truth is not a technicality, it means that I shouldn't have been caught in the first place. And so, you know, they spent all that money, they had to pay my arrister's cost, what a terrible waste of public money, just for their spiteful actions.
Okay, thank you very much. Could you just tell me a little bit more about how the tactics of the campaigners and the protesters evolved in the light of the injunction? You sort of alluded to it in answering my question before last, I think, but could you just tell us a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so it became more important to track where our risks were going, they made it harder, they, you see, I swear the dates, I get the hint, but they started to bring crews in from other places around the country, some as far as the mountain, which is extraordinary, to defray them. So there were more and more people involved, thankfully, a lot of us were mobile, had access to a vehicle, so we could go from Olive Grove and follow them and then alert other people so that they could go and so the only thing that means we had to have to pose a really was to there's where trees were coming across the road or into, sort of into private property because the injunction is specifically about the highway, if we were able to stand on a private wall or in a private garden or if we could get to the wall before the barriers put up and try not to be pushed and squashed away, if we could stay there. So we call that gecko because we had to be fixed on the wall. Some people did go up trees, so there were squirrels and they would, the old branches that were hanging, preventing, that didn't happen very often, but it did happen. Most of us are great climbers, most of us were middle-aged and retired people, you know, so we won't get to climb on trees so much. So there was that tactic and of course then the bunnies who had to disguise themselves so they could be identified and they actually got in the barriers and then helped the safety regulations kick in and they weren't allowed to fell while they were some present. And so, you know, various methods that we had to prevent them.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful. So the committal proceedings against you were dismissed, can you tell us how you were involved thereafter in the action on the streets, were you doing the same sorts of things or how were you involved?
The same, yeah, I did it genuinely because although, I mean, they became much more careful about the barriers once they'd realised that they couldn't use private property as part of their, but so that opportunity was lessened. But no, we could still try and get, using the techniques I described, if we could get there first, then oftentimes we could prevent failing. But with the security, that's why they brought the security people, I can't remember exactly when they made an appearance, but you know, they were there to stop us sneaking between barriers and walls and that sort of thing. And they did that in a very physical way, yeah, which, you know, this was pretty confronting.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't have brothers, I'm not used to being pushed around like that.
Right, now I understand.
So it's quite shocking.
Yes, yes. As you know, in the spring of twenty eighteen, the council decided to take a different approach. Do you have any theory or hypothesis about why they decided to do that?
I think it's probably multifactor, but things were, there's the Neers Brook riot which happened sadly, I wasn't there for that, disappointing me, but I knew about it pretty quick and and I don't know if you've been told about what brought that about. Okay, so there was, one of the bunnies was a very important person to people outside the barrier and she was being handled in a very rough manner and this was very distressing and so a family member, you know, was, couldn't tolerate what he was seeing and they pushed, pushed the barrier down and they all went in to protect her. And I think that the whole event was just so shocking in terms of the violence and then the fear, I guess, there was a fear that campaigners might resort to violence, which they didn't, I never witnessed that. And so that fear that this is just getting out of hand, I think that, I think that's what led to the pause that we can't do happens on the streets. Again, I don't think they, I don't think that that meant that they understood the importance of the trees to people, why people were so passionate. That it was more about perhaps the just the embarrassment and the the fact that they got security guards, they got these high hair fences, they got the police involved and yet still people were saying, no, we're not going to let this happen, we're not going to see trees treated this way and then naturally we're not going to see people treated this way. So it was, enough is enough and I think that that led to a pause, but subsequently through FOIs, like we had this, like in the campaign has a layer of extraordinary people who have a love of detail and pursuing information, getting to the tree through FOIs and this kind of thing. And yeah, it was revealed that following the pause, there was an intention that the council, that they were going to reembark trees, which leads to the death of the tree with tree council, I bet, and that was the plan. After the pauses, that they were going to do that to enable them to fell, how many more trees after the pause. Which is rather shocking, but thankfully, the tremendous work of one of the campaigners, Paul, mainly Paul Saly, was doing a lot of work attracting attention of the forestry commission because there were question marks about the legality of the felling in the first place. And so the forestry commission thankfully contacted the council before the reembarking exercise had taken place and that sent a lot of chief because the forestry commission told the council, look, you're facing the potential of recurring investigation, you need to stop them. So that really then put a lid on it, that they weren't going to pursue felling anymore until the legal issues became clear.
Okay, thank you. Again, you've alluded to this a little bit, but I just want to ask you, with the benefit of hindsight, why you think the dispute arose and why it proved difficult to resolve it in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen and the very beginning of twenty eighteen, when it proved possible by March, April, May twenty eighteen, to find a different way forward?
I think because they had wasted so much money and so much time, they're less than behind the schedule, they still are in some respects. And so again, as I, you know, my opening comments was this is all about money. And if money matters more to you than anything else, then that's what's going to motivate your decision-making. And so I think that the campaign had made this whole process so expensive for Amy's council that it was no longer tenable to continue to try and bully residents into acquiescence with this program, they just weren't having it. And so they didn't really have a choice for financial reasons, I imagine. You know, I don't ever mention that, I mean, my understanding, I think, don't know if it's not improved, but it seems to me like it's a lot cheaper to maintain streets that have got saplings on rather than doing mature trees. And of course, mature trees do, can disrupt the climate etc, so they do primary maintenance on the ground as well as some maintenance in terms of checking the health and rolling of the tree, might need occasional branches removed and this sort of thing. So that's obviously a lot of work, there were six thousand street trees to maintain, that's a lot of work. And so, you know, how that number, I think, assuming because of the length of the contract, would have cut costs and improved property margins. Because the campaign was so disruptive to that, I think that it's got to the point where the contract wasn't going to be worth what it ought to have been to the multinational campaign.
Okay, thank you. I want to ask you now about your views on the consequences of the dispute. You've described harms the dispute created, I want to give you a chance to say a bit more about the consequence of the dispute and also to tell us if any concerns you have over any issues that are not yet resolved or problems that could arise in future, I know I've asked several questions, we can go through them, but start off and then maybe I'll, well, come back to one or two points.
So consequences, well, of course, it's our city, it happened clearly as a result of what we learned about the lack of transparency, the difficult to access information, the difficulty to access. the difficulty to access, um, uh, councillors in terms of consultations, feeling that people, like, they love to have consultations, the lady group, but very rarely do they actually take very much notice of. Or, you know, the questionnaires are notoriously shaped in such a way, public surveys are shaped in such a way that they're designed to get the outcome that they want, to get the answers that they want. Um, and so, you know, people have understanding and become very jorndist about the whole process of so-called consultations. And it's just, yeah, it's very hard, um, to take them seriously or believe that they're there to be helpful. So there's, uh, there's that whole level of cynicism and lack of trust now, um, that is definitely a consequence. Because people have seen inside and they don't assume that it's there to represent them. And that's shown very clearly that the, you know, the council were siding with a multinational corporation rather than siding with the people that they're meant to represent, which is astonishing. I think this will happen. Um, so, so there's that, there's the lack of trust. Um, so now we've got the committee system, which, um, you know, I'm really hoping that people who don't have short memories, um, that we, we're able to maintain a better political balance in the city so that no one group has absolute dominance, hate them or again. Because, you know, representative democracy, you do need to have a multiplicity of voices coming from different political ideologies, et cetera. I think that's pretty happy. Um, but, but most of all, what, what I hope the committee system will do, and I'm not convinced that it's found, like, it's obviously still bedding in. But, you know, what, what I would really hope for, that one of the things that can be learnt is that the community is an extraordinary resource. You know, like the Tree Campaign really, really showed that. There are people who are so skilled and so able and competent, who are so ready and willing to give their time and these skills, their intelligence, their passion to the council for free, because they really care about their city. They really care about nature and the environment and they want, they want to help.
Hmm.
And that's what, like, just blew me away, you know, like, the commitment and the time so many people produce is just extraordinary. And if the council could just harness that, rather than being in opposition to them, if they could, if they can actually bring those people in to the committee system, not just through elected representatives, but directly, because there's just so much to give there. And, you know, if that could, if that could be something that came out of this whole process, that would be fantastic. You know, just to, to enable, like, active citizens to actually genuinely participate. I know they're not elected, so I know that they can't, you know, they can't have a vote. But we should certainly enable them to sway politicians, to have that opportunity, to, to have that voice. Um, because, yes, it's a remarkable resource that is actually wasted in the city.
Hmm.
Um, and so hopefully the street tree partnership, that's probably given them some confidence, I hope. To, to, they were councillors in particular, that, hey, we can learn something from these people and they're very nice and they want to help us. So rather than being afraid of them, you know, like, welcome them in. And, um, and that would be great.
Thank you very much. Very helpful indeed. Thank you. Are there any other points in respect of, um, concerns you might have over issues that are not yet resolved or problems that could emerge in the future?
Hmm, well, so one of the big problems is that obviously a lot of people are really upset that you didn't have the facility to compel witnesses. And so, because that's where a lot of the truth will lie, isn't it? And you don't have, you don't have access, um, to or the ability to, to have people who were very much involved, who have subsequently left. I think just about every senior officer that was involved in this whole OD situation has now left the council, which is very telling, isn't it? Just, I mean, it's, it cannot be a coincidence that all of them have actually left. So one wonders about their motivations. One wonders about what they could tell us if, if we had some mechanism to, to ask them to speak. So I think that reconciliation, uh, that this whole project in terms of rebuilding trust, et cetera, is very important. But what I worry about is there'll be a lot of truth that we just don't really get to, that we just don't really get to understand, um, why, um, various things happen, why people did the things that they did. You know, I'd love to, I'd like to understand particularly what the police did and why they did it. Um, I found that really puzzling. So, yeah, we'll still have a lot of questions, I dare say, as hard as you try and whatever. You know, I'm sure you do an excellent job, but I think that there will be gaps, where inevitably there will be gaps in the truth that we haven't been able to, to access. But, yeah, well, I, I don't think it would, um, you know, I guess we'll just be left to make assumptions and make up our own version of what we think that life in it was. It'd be just nice to have some things come back.
Who do you think, with the benefit of hindsight, might have done things differently? What, what might people have done differently and when?
Well, I guess from the, from the outset, they might have had the sensibilities to understand that, um, that we live in harmony with nature, if there's best we can, or to. And that, um, and that, you know, that, that the natural world is really important. And that, you know, trees are homes for birds and a multitude of other creatures and bats. And, you know, we learned a tremendous amount about birds and bats and, and all these things, you know, through the campaign. I mean, oh, it was one of the strategies, was putting up bat boxes and encouraging bats to roost, to protect a tree and all these sorts of things. I mean, the fact that, um, you know, it seems like no one, they did consider, didn't they? Like, they considered that there might be opposition, that some people wouldn't want trees felled, that there's similar contracts on them. And yet didn't take it seriously. Um, so I just wish that there had been, well, there were two green councillors there expressing concerns. They weren't listening to, so it's kind of just this culture of, like, we know best. Uh, uh, and also a trust in, um, I think, like, some of the officers maybe had, um, far too much power in terms of the process. Um, like particularly high-range engineer type people who see trees as obstacles rather than vitally important parts of the ecology. Um, so voices like that were very much heard. Um, but alternative voices were kind of, uh, just considered to be of no consequence. Well, I, I hope that they've learnt a lot now about, well, actually, these things really do matter. And of course, finally, finally, you know, the planet's, uh, mild domestic crisis has come to the fore and now Labour are actually recognizing its importance. There were people in Labour a long time ago, I know that. But in terms of the majority of the party and their attitude towards nature, et cetera, like, that's changing very rapidly now, which is great. But back in, uh, twenty, was it 2006 or something? When this contract was first muted or whatever, it was very, very scant attention paid to that, unfortunately. Even though we already knew since the 1980s just what we were facing. Um, so, yeah, just a shame that all along, they didn't seem to get it. They didn't seem to understand how important, um, the environment is. And that this, you know, this appropriation and exploitation of the natural world is something that has to stop. But it's just taken so much time, um, to get through to, um, people who are principally motivated by money and assets and accumulation.
Okay, so I've got through the list of questions I wanted to ask you. Thank you so much for, you know, giving us such a detailed perspective on, on what your concerns were and our experience from your point of view. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us?
Um, just, um, no, just, just to reiterate my hope that, just in, in particular for this council, because that's what, you know, the inquiry is ultimately about, about how it operates, that, that, that it'd be nice if your report, it, it ends up with some recommendations about how to include the public in a genuine way. Not just these consultations that everyone's going very cynical about, but then actually, like, face-to-face meetings, now we can do that again. And actually, you know, and they do have, like, they have, they had the Amy Roadshow, like, people could go and comment, but it seemed like, again, it seemed like it was just tokenistic. It wasn't real. It'd be lovely if a lesson could be learned about how do you make engagement with the public real? And how can we show the public that they're actually having an impact on what, what decisions are made? That, that would be, um, the best, as far as I can see, that would come out of this inquiry.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Any, anything else?
Uh, no, that's, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much indeed. Okay, Charles, okay. Stop the recording.